I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting in order. It's Monday, June 4, 2018. The time is nine o'clock. Everybody can stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Hello?
Mr. Henry.
It is me.
Ms. Reagan.
Right there.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
We have no public hearings. We'll move on to appointments. We do need to reappoint Rosa Sully to the Civic Center Board.
So move.
Second. Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll on that, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Move the table to business. John, I know you've had discussion about Medicaid for inmates.
Yes, I received a draft contract from the state about that. I sent an email towards the end of the week, last week, to the sheriff, asking some questions about his budget and numbers, and hopefully I'll get something back sometime this week.
Okay. Thank you. We'll just leave that table. We'll move on to approval of minutes. We have May 21, 2018 minutes, and the March 3, 2018 special CAFO meeting minutes.
Actually, Commissioners, that should be March 8, not March 3.
March 8.
That's when you have the meeting at Hartlet Hall.
I'll make a motion. We approve both minutes.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we have presentation to the Commissioners. We have Muncy Bar Association.
My name is Tom Alappi. I'm the president of the Muncy Bar Association. Current address, 201 North High Street here in Muncy. Before you is a resolution that the Muncy Bar Association adopted on May 22nd, and what it is, it's an attempt to explain at least the concerns that the bar association has with respect to moving the courts. This has nothing to do with moving the jails, as may have been previously reported. The courts, as you all know, have always been located in downtown. The court staff is located downtown. The attorneys have most of their offices downtown. For the convenience of the public, the courts are located downtown, close to public transit. There's numerous reasons that are listed in our resolution where we believe that moving the court system from downtown would present some problems. And there are a number of attorneys here. I don't want to speak for everybody, but we all have our concerns on what the economic impact would be for downtown. We're in the process of, we've talked about doing an economic study to help this commission understand what the economic impact would be. So I don't want to take up too much of your time, because I know there's others here that might want to say a few words, but we have serious concerns on what the economic impact would be, and from an attorney's standpoint, what the day-to-day would be for us and the travel considerations to a different location. So I'm going to let some of the other members of our Muncy Bar Association speak at this time.
My name is Steve Murphy, 400 South Walnut Street in Muncy. It has been my perception from practicing law for about 42 years that the center of each county is involved with the government of the county, and that includes the court system. I think all 92 counties have the county seat right in the middle of the county. And it's important for the economics of the county, I think, as much as anything. We're not trying to look at this from our point of view. We're trying to look at this from the point of view of the county as a whole, and it's important, in our perspective, that the county have a vital center. The downtown in Muncy is actually doing very well right now. I remember 10 years ago, people used to say to me, "The only thing that exists in downtown Muncy is lawyers, the justice system, bankers, and jewelers." And now the jewelers are pretty much gone, and the banks have moved out with branch banks, but the justice system still is in downtown. And there are about 100 lawyers in the city of Muncy. All of us are downtown, with just a couple of exceptions. And I think what you would see if the courts move outside of downtown, first of all, and I think Mr. King's comment was good, when he said, "We don't let the prisoners go out to have lunch downtown." Right, we don't. The jail, I think, makes sense to move, but we certainly let the judges out at lunch, and we let the court staff out at lunch. And there are, as I said, 100 lawyers and staff in the downtown area. And I think if the courts are located somewhere else, there won't be a reason for us to be downtown. We'll be out on McGahyard, or out on Tillotson, or somewhere else. At some point in time, it'll take some time for that to happen. But I think for the vitality of the downtown businesses and the downtown development, and for the importance to Delaware County, we think the court system should remain downtown. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Carnes. I'm an attorney with Dennis Moyer in April here downtown Muncy, also at 324 West Jackson Street. Been practicing about 17 years in this community. Love what we've done downtown over the last five or 10 years, I believe. Economic development has thrived. We have people coming into the community, talking about how nice of a downtown area we have, and I totally agree with Steve Murphy and the resolution as to what could be the effects if we start taking away the Justice Center from the downtown area, the clerk's office, those type of people that are down here. Ease for our clients as well, obviously, the need at our offices to work on documentation, to get those documents filed, to run back and forth from the county building. That's why we are a block and a half, two blocks away, so that we can have that ease of access. And I do agree with Steve that eventually, and not happen immediately, that the attorneys would have no reason to be downtown, as well as the staff that's here. So we would request the Commissioners, as they look through this process, to really think about what the impact could be on downtown in the area, and let's keep the development in a revitalized way, you know what I mean? Thank you.
Do you have anyone else? I don't know if there's anyone else that's here that plan to speak, but I believe that's it. We just want to make sure our concern is expressed. Yep. We would like to thank you guys for your presentation. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements for approval. We have the bid opening for Bridge 701, the rehab, Water Street in Albany.
Yes, Angie's handed me seven, right, Angie?
If you need my assistance, let me know. I'll come over and help you.
First one is Duncan Robinson, Franklin, Indiana. Second one is Beatty Construction, Bogstown, Indiana. Their bid is $413,455 even. Next one is R.A. Myers Construction, Muncy, Indiana. Their bid is $470,531.67. Constructors, Inc., out of Indianapolis. Their bid is $527,950.73. Next one is... Next one is from Shut Look-a-Bill Company, Inc., out of Indianapolis. Their bid is $379,280.13. Next one is from Milestone Contractors LP, Portland, Indiana. Their bid is $426,141.13. And the final one is from Hoosier Pride Excavating, Springport, Indiana. Their bid is $405,451.40.
Commissioners, if I could review these along with my engineer, Steve question, which you have me sitting in the back, and then we make a recommendation at your next meeting?
I make a motion. We take them under advisement until next meeting.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have an application for county edit grant funds in from Delaware County Historical Society.
Morning. I'm Jim Whacker, Executive Director of the Delaware County Historical Society, and my request today was kind of twofold. One is, we put in for some edit funds. We're in the process of replacing and adding new sidewalk around the outside of the Morio's House, which is our museum portion of the organization, and sidewalks are very unsafe, and there's the second half of them are just flagstone, kind of randomly placed. And we put in a request through the Delaware County and Muncy Foundation for the total cost, which was about $9,500, and we got $5,000 from them for that project. And we're actually going to start on a portion of that now. And the edit fund request was for the additional funds to go ahead and finish the sidewalk all the way around, so that it's, not only improves the appearance of the area, but also improves the safety a lot for the people. So we were requesting $4,700 from edit. And then additionally, I've been talking with Sherri and some other people about, in the past, the county commissioners have funded, I don't know how far past, but before my time, obviously, but funded some money for the operation of the Historical Society. And I'd like to request some consideration for you all to take us on again to some degree or another. We're improving the downtown. We're trying to improve the area, maintaining the grounds a lot better, and we've been very involved in a lot of activities, including restoration of the statues to the northwest corner of the building here. And we want to continue providing the community, the Delaware County, with some, not only preservation of our history, but also in education and programming and assisting other projects where we can. So that was my request for this morning.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, on the back page, you have a picture of the sidewalk. Now, I would take it, this is a two-part project, the sidewalk around the front.
Right now, we're going just as far, just a little past the porch. That was all the funds we had to get that far, and we need to go all the way around, because beyond there, there really is non-existent sidewalk, except for just random stones.
But the picture you have here is going up to the back door.
Yeah.
So is that what our part would be paying for?
It'd be paying for, we'd just combine it.
Combine it, okay.
So, yeah, it would be the whole project. And I have an artist's rendering of what it would look like if we did it all the way around. Can I see that, please? Yeah.
Did you guys get any funding from the City of Muncy also?
No.
Have you ever requested any funding from the City of Muncy?
We had some funding when we did the Scout Muncy project. They asked us to take that on under advisement. They're doing.
Because I know, not only are you going to say that the City of Muncy, they get edit funds, too?
Yeah.
So I don't know, like, if we helped you guys out a portion, if the city would help you out a portion.
That I don't know. We're a county organization, you know, we're a county historical society, and that's why we...
Yeah, I understand, yeah.
But I'm open to anything.
Yeah, well, I know some of the historical stuff also sits within the...
Right, yeah, they provided us...
The City of Muncy, that, you know, they're always talking about revitalizing areas also, so I didn't know if they would be interested in helping the Historical Society.
I'm not opposed to asking.
You'd probably anything, wouldn't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because I have no problem with helping you guys out, but...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I think what Jim was referring to earlier, I think it was about four or five thousand, maybe up to six thousand at one time, that it was in the...
I think it was around six thousand a year for a long time, and then...
Yeah, and things got bad, and...
Some years ago, probably 10 years ago.
I think it was about, yeah.
I think about when the tax cap started hitting, and started losing a lot of funding and that. That's in that one.
I will say this for Jim, he's really turned the place around, and he's done a great job, and we can't hold it against him that he's living in a different county than he has been, but we appreciate him driving back and forth.
He's here every day.
Yeah, he's here every day. You know, I would, we could study it a little bit, if you want to table with, ask more questions.
Do you have a problem if we table until our next meeting?
No.
No.
You make that a motion, Sherri.
Yeah, I'll take one. I'll move that we take one.
I'll second it.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Just real quick, for my permission, what are you replacing the flagstone with?
With brick.
You're going to put brick in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Been working with Scott Boyce to do a really nice, proper sidewalk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Oh, just one more note. I would invite all of you to come over and visit, if you haven't been over there for a while.
You still have your derby? Yeah, Jim's using part of the living room to make a little museum over there.
Next, we'll move to...
Mr. President, if I could, we have one more. We have one more. This is the RFP for the jail project that we sent out, or you guys sent out in April. We had one response from BW Development at Fisher's. It's multiple copies. Proposal for the design, build, finance, and operation of the Delaware County Jail. I've got six copies, confidential information, and a sealed proposal. I would ask the Commissioners to take that under advisement.
I'll make a motion. We take that under advisement.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I think we need to go back and load on the table, though.
You made that motion already, and...
I think you called the roll on the table.
Yeah, and Shannon seconded it, and Steve called the roll on that, didn't you, Steve?
Yes, on the Historical Society.
Yeah, on the Historical Society. Yep. All right, let's get to the RFP stuff. We'll move to resolutions for approval. We have Resolution Number 2018-019, a resolution to pull work by the Highway Department.
There is a statute that requires the, if the county is going to do work between $100,000, a value of $100,000, $300,000, or less than $250,000, with its own workforce, that the Commissioners have to make a determination that the workforce is capable and can perform this work. I received some information from Mr. Jesse of a project on 800 East from County Road 250 North to Edgewater, and that the cost of the project was going to be $203,917.40. It's within that threshold. This is the work performed by the Highway Department, and this is similar to ones we did last year. And I think the Commissioners have made a determination in the past that the Highway Department and its employees are up to and have demonstrated their skill and critiques for the roads and bridges in the county. And I know the work that they did on Clifton Road, my neighbors are very appreciative of that, so I would recommend that Resolution 2018-19 be approved.
I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2018-019.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, Department Heads and elected officials. Good morning, Mr. Rogers.
Good morning. Jason Rogers, Delaware County University Management Director. I want to report back to you on the process of the eGov website and web auctioning, and so far it's going really well. We've finished a single auction. There are three more that we'll finish today. All of those will finish above what the minimum limits were set at, so we are very pleased with the way that the auctions have been run and the way that they work through the website itself. We are obviously waiting on the first check from payment, and then pick up from the items that were listed from the first auction. That was a week ago. The other three auctions will finish today, and they end at 4:30, so we will proceed with that process. I've spoken to Mr. Walker, Mr. Fluke, and Mr. Jesse, and we are ready to start listing their items as well. I want to spend some time with the sheriff and talk to him about anything that they may have, have, or that is ready to go to auction as well. So we're phasing this in a little slower than we really truly need to, but we want to make sure that it all works before we go listing several hundred items. So far, it's worked very, very well. Maguado Lynn here, and I can appreciate what the bar association presented to you this morning, and the one thing I would like to add, and I'm probably not going to make any friends over this, because this doesn't work into their convenience in the downtown idea, but I worked in that basement of the Justice Center for four years, and at least once a year, we had feces running through the main hallway down from dispatch all the way to the fire exit. The walls sweat. It's really not a great atmosphere to work in every day. I don't know too many plumbers that like organ and that stuff, and I can guarantee you that the sheriff's deputies that moved into that space are dealing with that same thing. So I can appreciate the ease and comfort of having all that, the Justice Center and the justice system downtown, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't stand up and say, "I have serious concerns for our workforce that work in that building." Not only the guys in the basement from the Sheriff's Department, but with the jail over top of the court system, the secretaries, the legal aides, and the people that work in that building itself have to deal with some pretty untimely things that happen, you know, with just the plumbing alone. So I think it's a lot to think about, but my personal opinion is, is we should make our workforce work in that kind of condition, and something's got to be done, aside from what's going on on the third floor with the report back from the, I think it's the Department of Justice about the jail improvements. But I know you guys know, we've got videotape of, or video of, pictures of all the instances that we had when emergency management was in the basement, and I can't imagine that those guys are going through anything less difficult. I know that we've given them water wicking booms and those types of mitigation pieces to put across their office doors, so sewage doesn't run into their offices. So it's a tough position to be in. I can appreciate the bar association's stance on that, but I don't think that they would be very happy if they had to work in those conditions either. So, thank you.
Jason, I worked in the jail from '94 to '99, so...
That's right, I had forgotten that.
Yeah, so I know the jail. Also, as a Commissioner, I've had court staff that has stated that they've ended up sick because of mold inside the building also, so, I mean, we've got to look to make it a better place for the workers to work at.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know, you know, there's a lot of talk about where it's going to be in money, and whether that will affect downtown or not, but the fact of the matter is, nobody should be made to work in that environment, and I don't think that that's necessarily been highlighted. And, you know, we've tried to repair some things. We've done things over the years. We've, you know, we've done some mold mitigation, but that building is antiquated, and it's time to move on. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Have anybody else? We'll move down to a payment of claims in the amount of $2,680,094.82.
So move.
Second. Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Any comments from the public?
I've got a couple of things on my mind. Anyway, one of them is, is I've seen the Highway Department's been working very well and getting a lot done. I realize that your expenses, what you proved, has jumped considerably over the last two meetings, which is understandable, too, because I've seen a lot of new machinery and whatnot. So you're spending money, you know, quite well, and I think it's quite well managed, too. The part with the lawyers and the judges not liking to move out of town, you'll never be able to please those two people. All those sat right here and said what they wanted to say, then got up and left. You know, that's lawyers for you. Sorry, but, you know, if this...
Don't take it, John.
I'll say, "I'll take it."
Well, if you weren't paid for it, we'd be there.
Hey, I sat up there for four years, and I got paid, so...
But you're under the gun now from the state to create a new jail, and I feel that that's the first priority that you need to work on. If you cut the population of the number of people that's housed here in the building right next to us, then you're going to cut down a lot of your sewage problems, too. So it's, you can't please everybody, is what I'm trying to say, but it's, you've got a big job ahead of you, so keep at it.
Well, I know one of the comments from them is that they would move their offices on McGahyard and Tillotson. They would actually, if we did do this at the Ason's Building, they would actually be moving farther away than what they are downtown.
I recognize that, you know, it's...
So that wouldn't make a lot of sense to me.
I know. We're going to Amazon anyway for lawyers, so what the heck?
You could move your office closer to the south side, which would help revitalize the south side of Muncy, but you would move farther away, so I didn't understand that comment either, so...
I guess the easiest way to describe the south side of Muncy is, we've got a beautiful cloverleaf at the bypass and 12th Street, but we have nothing at McGahyard. And the reason why is it's political. Ball Corporation had a... Ball Corporation had a ownership of the ground at 12th Street where the bypass went through. And they said, "We're going to take and develop the south side of Muncy." So they put a big bypass there, and it's never happened. Walmart even closes at midnight. So it's, the south side is not the county's responsibility to rebuild, is my point in a way. It's been tried and tried again and again, and McGaughers is going to take and disappear the same way north side is, is the way that things are going. If the economy gets slow, you're going to see a lot of your restaurants on McGaughers Road close too. We're in a big turmoil right now. We're sitting high and dry at the moment, but we're seeing some problems in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If nobody else, I'll entertain motion recess.
I will.
Second.
Have a second and have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes, we're going to recess.